You had a good visit with the general.
Oh, you've been there.
It was last weekend and this week.
It's got the seed on it in case he gets tired.
Ninety-six years.
All right, well, it's me for yourself. I won't be around here, man.
I'm not gonna be able to make.
I heard y'all got a lot of meetings tomorrow, too. Well, normally that's all we need to do. Well, do you understand you must have made this up?
It probably will. I'll be in for it all day.
Then they claim the potpourri.
Yeah, I closed it for three.
Yes, so then they take the road to the toilet. Should have tabled it before we closed it.
That's you. Welcome to this house. We're the commissioners being Mr. Broom. If you will lead us in the invocation.
That's right. Dear Father, thank you, Lord, for being with us on this day. Thank you, dear Lord, for waking us up this morning and starting us, starting us on our way with the least proportion of our life permission. Father God, I ask you to be with us during this meeting. Help us to do the things as right and pleasing in thy sight and for the town of Sower City. For these and other blessings I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Peter Johnson, invocation. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mary, if you would do our mission statement.
Yes, sir. To advance the framework for success, to balance governance, to narrow partnerships, and engage.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, if you would do our vision statement.
Sower City is safe, prosperous, and Bible community. The diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you both. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Sure.
So the move probably second that we approve the agenda. All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right here. None motion carried.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by a second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, let it be known by a sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right here. None. Thank you all. Public comment. Mr. Mundine, if you would come forward and I hope I pronounced that right. Didn't mess your name up.
Oh, you're good.
And give us your name and address.
My name is Mike Lettington, 343 Roland Marsh Road. I spoke last time and a couple of y'all weren't here, but as I said before, I mean, Harold Andrews Road will not handle traffic, but number one. I live on Roland Marsh Road. I live in front of Morgan Charles, I live behind Dalton. And they said in the past, I didn't say this last time, but they said in the past that they've contacted the land adjoining owners. But there's more people affected than just the adjoining people. I don't have land that adjoins to the property, but I have land that adjoins to my uncle's. I don't want to see, I don't want to see the livestock going or the hayfield being not being mowed. I don't want to see housing. And I, I travel a lot of places and all I see is these houses just roof, 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 roof. And I mean, there's literally, you better get a lawnmower through all these places in between the houses, you know? And I don't want to see that. Our, our community, I don't think, that's just not what we're about. But I don't want to lose the, the lot, the, the, even the deer or the animals or, that's my main thing. Y'all gonna tear all the woods down, build all this concrete. What's it gonna do to my well? I'm on a well of seventy tank. Uh, you know, I, I just don't want to see it. It's, it's just not good for the community. It's gonna be dangerous. It's where I pull out my road every day. If you're not careful, there's a curve and a slight hill right there. And if you don't go, you're toast. You know, you're gonna get hit. Cause I mean, I don't care what speed limit is. Nobody does speed limit anyway. The other end of the road, I know DOT said there's not a problem down there, but there is a problem down there because that hill is a bad hill coming over. If you put more traffic on it, then it's, it's, it's just going to come, it's just gonna be worse than it is already. Uh, a little lady lived down the road. That's what we always told her. You pull out, you better get it. She was ninety years old before she gave her license up, you know, but, but I just don't want to say that what, what they're promoting and, and, you know, somebody's gonna get make money. But, you know, life shouldn't be all about money. It, it just shouldn't be about money. I mean, I don't, I don't want to lose the, the, uh, the natural. I mean, it's just beautiful out there. I mean, you know, it's just beautiful where I live. I go on my back deck and just, and just see nature. You know, I can sit at any given deck, see anything, but that, that's my point. That's all the thing I want to say. So just, just, I said, I, I don't know what else to say about it. It's just not a good fit. It's not a good fit for me, definitely. I can say that. It's not a good fit for Sower City. Sower City is not going to draw all these people into Sower City to live with. I don't want to be another carry. Uh, I think we just need to stay the way we are. I mean, you know, it's been, it's been long enough. We, we survived these many years. So why can't we survive longer? That's all I gotta say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Gaines.
Yes, sir.
If you'd come forward and state, give your name and address.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Mitch Gaines from Goldston, a small town in Goldston. Uh, first off, I want to say thank you. It was refreshing to hear the prayer and the, and the pleasure of allegiance. That was, that was nice. So thank you for going in. So Mitch Gaines, 2265 Goldston Glenon Road, right outside of Goldston, born and raised. Uh, I just wanted to come speak briefly about, um, my understanding is that Sunrock is possibly going to approach you for the annunciation of their land, which is right outside of Goldston that Goldston rejected. This is six hundred thirty-nine acre, uh, partial land. I want to go over just a few, three facts here that's from their, um, from what they submitted, uh, to Goldston. Uh, we dealt with them for over two years down in Goldston, uh, myself and a few others here. Um, Ashley was involved. Uh, we went to the, uh, community hearing, went to the, um, actually the, uh, the review, the, the, the discussion of, that's for the public here, not you, the fellow. And we met with them, uh, spoke many times to Alex and, and his group, his team that he was bringing there. Um, they had a lot of nice PowerPoints presentations, uh, charts. Um, they spoke about how Goldston needed it. Um, how, you know, Goldston was a dying community, um, how we needed their fifty thousand annually, uh, that they were going to gift us. Uh, they actually proposed, uh, for approval of their annunciation, uh, that they would give fifty thousand a year for five years. And at the very end, they actually put an offer on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar tract land that adjoined the Goldston Park. Um, and that was all contingent of, 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 upon approval. So not very ethical, really, you would say, right? Um, and I actually asked them directly in the, in the meeting, you know, was all that contingent upon approval? They said yes. It was a contingent upon approval of their request. So they wanted, you know, annex it in. Goldston told them no. Um, they had to have it to do a rock quarry. Um, and actually I asked Alex himself at the meeting as well. You know, all the other three rock quarries has an asphalt plant and a concrete plant. And he did say that, yes, we're doing this for a rock mining plant or rock mining. He said that odds are you will also have an asphalt and a concrete plant. Okay? So Goldston told them no. Uh, so just some quick facts. We'll go over here and I'm actually going, um, if I can submit this right here. It's just excerpts from their, uh, what they submitted. So according to the traffic impact analysis, this is actually done by DOT engineer. There's going to be a total of, in an, and an eight hour period, there's going to be eleven hundred and forty dump trucks per day. So if you put math, that's a hundred and forty-two and a half an hour, one every twenty-five seconds. Reminder, this is a two-lane road. Eighty, according to this, uh, report, volume two, eighty percent of that traffic is going to go down ninety-two, which is going to go by the Chatham Central High School. So you can imagine a dump truck, it, every twenty-five seconds going by the high school. For those of you familiar with Chatham Central, it's a two-lane road. It's very narrow. Okay? The remainder of that will most likely come through Goldston. Uh, so also, uh, the surrounding houses, uh, are all on well water. According to their findings report, this is from Sunrock, a hundred and forty-four million gallons of water annually used. Of that, eighty-eight million will come from groundwater seepage. Uh, so groundwater seepage is when they dig down into the pit, which busts the aquifers and the aquifers, which is what feeds their wells, will drain into the pit. So eighty-eight million gallons of water. Uh, so, and then the last thing, I'll finish it pretty quickly. Uh, sand levels will be up at one mile, be a hundred, a hundred and seven decibels. According to ocean standards, a hundred and five decibels should be limited to one hour exposure. So I just ask you, if they do approach you, just please keep the small community of Goldston in mind. Um, and just don't take it lightly. Just please take it serious, but please tell them no, uh, Goldston and the community strongly opposed it. Tell them Goldston strongly opposed it. Uh, they actually sued casual county, uh, fifty-eight residents they sued. Um, you can look that up online. Where's Carolina's Rock sue casual county? Uh, so I'll most submit this if I can, just with this right here.
If we give it John Clark, she would, um, make sure we get it late.
Again, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. James, if you would come forward and, uh, state your name and address.
My name is John Jennings. I live at twenty-two twelve Goldston Glenon Road. I live across the street from Mitch. And, um, I won't go over what he said because everything he's reported is correct. The one thing that concerned us very much is there's three passes, three paths that Sunrock proposed traffic flows to be. And as Mitch said, they're talking in excess of eleven hundred vehicles per day. Those three paths were Goldston Glenon Road, going over and cutting through Bear Creek, and also going over and going through from which Chapel Road, which dumps into Goldston. Um, two of those will pass schools and, uh, our park, not to mention about four miles of very relatively narrow four, or a highway that go in front of all our residents. So that was a concern. Uh, I came from Fort Wayne, Indiana, moved down here four years ago. And we had a very large quarry in the town of Fort Wayne, which I lived about fifteen miles from. Um, I'm from the construction industry. I, I have been around construction my entire life from Lockndam, twenty-sixth on the Mississippi River to hospitals. And we know what happens when, uh, when you dig into the earth. But one of the things that really bothered us was the fact that the sound, uh, of the quarry, the machinery, and the fact that within months of the time, the, the quarry in Fort Wayne opened, all the roads with that entire area were covered with white dust from the, from the rock and stuff they were transporting in the trucks. Um, one of our biggest concerns is there's about two hundred and fifty homes within the aquifer that are there. And most of those homes, though, in the seventies and eighties, it had relatively shallow wells. My son-in-law's house well is about eighty-four foot deep. Um, according to the geologist for Sunrock, we're sitting on a, a volcanic dome. Each time there was a lava eruption, it formed a layer of rock. In the meantime, the ash and stuff that built up on top of it until the next eruption is where the aquifers are. They can be anywhere from ten to twenty foot apart, sometimes more than that. As they go down and crest each break, when each of those aquifers, you're going to drain all the water from the area. Uh, my son-in-law's house, if you let the water run for more than about two and a half, about two hours of time, it'll start to decrease the amount of water that it can pump. You turn it off for twenty minutes, it's back to full flow again. Um, it, it seems to me that, and the, and the engineer that I spoke to from Sunrock, geologist, he said, yes, every time we punch through a layer, you're going to basically dry up the wells at that layer. So it won't be long before you're going to start seeing many, many people's wells go dry. I asked the guy from Sunrock who's responsible for that. He said, well, that's yet to be determined. Someone would have to sue us to prove that we caused that and, and for us to add damages that would have to occur. So we live in a beautiful community. I moved from Indiana down here. And the one thing that we, my wife and I talk about constantly is when we're driving is the beautiful pine forests that are everywhere around us. Um, to take that area and turn it into a quarry when there's three other quarries that are operational within fifteen miles of us, seems like a, this, you know, very destructive piece of, to, to that particular piece of ground. Uh, so our complaints are noise, vibration from the, from the blasting, vibrator noise from the machinery, dust and pollution in the air. Cause when, when that dust settles, it's not only on the roads, it's around, it's around the property also. Uh, the water system and, and just the general safety concerns of trucks going up and down the highway and past our schools and parks. So thank you very much for having us here tonight. If you have any questions, be glad to provide any information you'd like to hear.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Jones, if you would come and state your name and address.
Thank you for having me. Uh, Josh Jones, twenty-two, or twenty-one eighteen Goldston Glenon Road. Um, I'm sure you can guess by now what I'm here to talk about. Uh, just like with the prior to, um, I mean, I echo everything they've said, uh, you know, just as Mitch mentioned. Sunrock approached Goldston. Goldston said no. They said no because people within Goldston came to the meetings and people outside of Goldston came to the meeting, such as myself and these two, many others. We don't want the quarry there. It, it doesn't matter whose land it, it is. It doesn't matter if it's Sower City. It doesn't matter if it's schools. We don't want it. Um, the environmental impacts, um, touched on a little bit, but, uh, you know, just as, um, that gentleman had mentioned the, the, the beauty of the area. It, a, a gold, a quarry is not going to do anything for that. It's going to ruin it. It's going to drive wildlife out of the area. It's going to affect not only water tables, aquifers, in terms of the water for people to drink, the wells, but that, that land is, uh, predominantly wetland. Uh, it, it's, it, it's going to ruin the environment. Uh, there's, it, it's a very special piece of land. Um, the, the health impacts as well, uh, the dust in the air, as was mentioned. Um, that, that stuff doesn't, it doesn't settle right nearby. We've got three other quarries in the area. One in particular is, you, you can't drive by without turning your car white. I don't drive a white car. You wouldn't know that if you looked out in the parking lot. I don't drive through the quarry. I don't drive on dirt roads. And yet my car's covered in dust just because I drive approximately a quarter of a mile away from the quarry. There, there's no, there's no reason my car should be covered in quarry dust when I don't drive to the quarry. That, that's about it. If I keep going, I'll, I'll get animated. I might use some colorful language, but I, I appreciate you guys covering.
Thank you for covering.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Steve Marsh.
My name is Steve Marsh and I live at two eighty-six Dorset Road in Sower City. And this is concerning the, uh, proposed project off of Harold Andrews Road, not the quarry, um, in Goldston. Um, I told, I asked Mr. Patterson there, the number of, as he mentioned, rooftops for that project, proposed pop project is three hundred and seventy-one rooftops. So, uh, the simple math on that, uh, most people, uh, will have more than one car. And the ones that have one car, they'll be families with three and four. So I think the, the, the minimum number, um, two times three seventy-one is, um, seven hundred and forty-two additional cars there. Well, if you're familiar with that road there, when you turn off of Old Greensboro Highway and the other end of it meets, um, Snow Count Road, that's the, that's where it goes there. There is, um, uh, as soon as you turn off of Old Greensboro Road and go down, it's not a ninety degree, but it's a pretty good curve right there, uh, right before you get to Fletcher Solid Road. Um, there's another curve there also. Actually, there's two curves, one before that and one right before you get to Fletcher Solid Road, which is on the left. Uh, there's no shoulder on that road. I, I was here a long time ago and they mentioned about putting a, uh, turn in lane. But unless you want to address that road from one end to the other, you're not gonna, you, you're not gonna really affect the, the amount of flow on that road. Um, so also on that road, you've got basic metal, which has twenty-five to thirty vehicles possibly there. I didn't count them today, but they several in the parking lot. You've got, um, um, the parking lot with all the trailers in it out from, um, Darryl Andrews's business there, uh, with maybe fifty to sixty, and they're coming in throughout the day all the time. And, um, and then you've got the residents that live there. So you have, at that minimum, seven hundred and forty-one more vehicles coming out throughout the day with these fifty-foot trailers on a road that is no shoulder, two, two-lane and some pretty sharp turns. Um, you know, it's too much. I, I, I really believe it's too much. Um, you know, the developers, they're, you know, nothing wrong with them. Obviously, they're trying to make money, understand that. But I really feel like, um, they're not going to live in that development and they're not, not going to live near it, either one. So it won't, they won't be affected. So, um, I just feel like it's a bad fit for the area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public.
Motion to close public comment.
The move probably second that we close the, uh, public comment. All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right here. None motion carried. Presentation five point one, uh, audit.
Good evening. My name is Jay Sharp. I'm the audit partner, uh, in charge of the town audit. I'm here to present the June thirty of two thousand twenty-two audit tonight. Um, so I'll start out with the status of the audit. Uh, fieldwork has been completed. Uh, the financial statements have been prepared and the audit has been submitted to local government commissions for their review and approval. Uh, once they do come back with that approval, we'll be able to issue the June thirty of two thousand twenty-two audit. So that's where we're at. We just waiting for their approval. Now we submitted it about a week and a half ago. So I'm hoping to have that approval sometime this week. I face some usual timelines with them. Uh, want to talk a little bit about what we do as auditors, um, our roles and objectives. You know, we, we don't just start crunching the numbers. There's some things we do upfront. We call it planning. Um, most of that involves internal controls, evaluating internal controls, uh, sometimes testing controls. Uh, we tested controls over three areas for two thousand twenty-two, uh, cash expenditures, payroll, and credit card usage. And we do this with some other planning procedures before we start crunching the numbers, as they said, because, um, we have to be, have to have a roadmap on how we're going to conduct our audit every year. It's going to be different. We don't do the exact same thing. Uh, we call it a risk-based audit approach. And we, we assess risks through every significant financial reporting area the town has, for example, cash, revenues, expenses. Um, in the form of our procedures to gain, we consider to be sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on financial statements. That's why we hire us is to give an opinion and not any constraints or whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So I want to present the results of the two thousand twenty-two audits. Um, obviously scope and timing of the audit were not on track. Um, I think you already are well aware, there's been significant turnover in the finance department. Um, first year we conducted the audit for the town was June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. And between the start of that audit and now, you know, there's been three different finance officers, which has delayed things significantly. Um, the, the reason we hire us, the audit report, the opinion, uh, the town did get an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean audit opinion and, uh, the best audit opinion you can receive. So that is good news for the town. Um, however, uh, you know, during our audit procedures, if we knew any issues, we're required to report those as findings. Uh, there's two levels of findings, uh, significant efficiency and material weakness. Uh, material weakness is a harsher of the two. Uh, the town had one of each for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, over expenditure of the budget was a significant deficiency. Uh, inter, internal controls over financial reporter, reporting was a material weakness. Uh, and that was a finding because of delays of being able to conduct the audit. Um, and this is a repeat finding in two thousand twenty-one, uh, the internal control issue. As a result of our audits, we had significant adjustments to the books as we were given to, well over a dozen audit entries. Once again, that's what led to material weakness because we had a material amount of journal entries, uh, in the numbers we're given at the beginning of the audit. In addition to the audit, uh, we're required to issue a separate letter, a cause communications letter. There's four main talking points with that letter. First one, insignificant accounting policy changes. Uh, there was one new standard that came into place related to leases for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, one of the areas you pay close attention to during the audit proceedings are any numbers derived from management's estimates. Uh, the town's major two estimates are the appreciable lives of its capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. It is pure reasonable no issues there. Uh, happy report, we had disagreements with management during our process. Um, we did have significant difficulties during the audit, you know, it's delayed audit. Um, as I said, on your third finance officer, um, he came in after, you know, these, this year was closed. So, you know, he was trying to accumulate information we were asking for, uh, that he wasn't here during that timeframe. So he obviously had to delay the audit, um, with that. Uh, but like I said, um, clean audit opinion, uh, but there are two findings, one on a repeat. Uh, more, more serious one is material weakness within internal controls over the financial close process. Uh, I'll be glad to take any questions you have on the audit proceedings and results of the audit for two thousand twenty-two.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the job well done and getting us into a good place. And hopefully, once LGC goes ahead and gives that approval, we'll move to the next one. And it's John in the room.
Yes, yes, sir.
And I want to thank John for his due diligence and getting us to a good place. Uh, I do understand that it was rough trying to put all this together and get it into your hands, especially when you didn't have anything to do with it previously. So I want to thank both of you for a job well done.
And I want to also add that, um, John, Jack, and myself have also worked closely with the LGC to ensure that all the internal controls have been put into place where we did that kind of immediately. Um, like the segregation of duty or separation of duties and stuff. So we're real proud of that. So hopefully we can move quicker.
Well, then that, in this case, I, I, I want to thank all four of you for the job of getting us into a good place with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, helping.
Business five point one Harold Andrews Road, conditional zoning.
Well, taking into the account that, um, the traffic would be overwhelmed for too long, though. I would like to make a motion to deny the proposed zoning map amendment and find the following. The zoning map is, is consistent with the twenty twenty-four comprehensive land use plan. The zoning map amendment is not appropriate or reasonable for this property because it is neither in the public interest nor will it benefit the surrounding community.
Sir, so the move and private second that the rezoning be denied for the Harold Andrews rezoning project. All in favor, let it be known by a sign of eye.
Uh, no. A quick, quick comment about that?
Uh, we've already made the motion. You cannot move.
We were waiting on another TIA that was private party that wasn't from the developer.
Cannot do that in the midst of this, where it is now.
Reopen the public hearing, give them more time to have a third-party evaluate traffic.
It's already been called for, but.
So we didn't allow any deliberation. Cindy just went straight to motion. We never discussed anything.
So I got a motion second.
That's right, so I, as.
There's no, there's no chance for deliberation. You go straight, you go straight to it.
All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right, here is none motion carried.
We were told there would be another TIA from a third party. I don't know what happened with that. I spoke to Jack Meadows about it. We, we thought we had time. If the public hearings reopen, they would have two months to put a, put one together. Could have had a second opinion regarding traffic.
New business.
There's no business, please, sir.
Governor body report, manager's report, I'm sorry.
Got your calendar out. I'm calling you, yes. Just two things to mention. Uh, November sixth is Thursday, the salute event is on the, uh, uh, again, it's, uh, the center event, visiting Pittsburgh. So three o'clock, and then November eleventh, next Tuesday, is, is Veterans Day, it's holiday. So we closed, they will also have a salute event at our memorial at ten a.m.
All right.
Here.
Thank you, sir. That's all you have. Uh, Governor body comments?
Jack, thank you for that, uh, grant. That was huge. I don't know if you do it as a staff or a common man. Well, that's great. I haven't scored four million, almost four million.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you. I don't know who did it, but thank you.
Yes.
Does that actually dig earth, or is that just paper pushing and hiring architects, engineers, and whatnot to give us ideas?
Raise granite your tongue out for, 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 particularly shot in the center area. It's more, uh, getting the design drawings for that.
And we don't have to contribute anything.
Zero percent.
No match.
No match.
It was awesome. Had some superheroes show up that night from the police department.
Oh, yeah, that was a good yell. I'm glad you did that one. Yeah. Chunk of tree was awesome.
It was, it was fantastic. Everybody talked about how great it was, and I think it's so good for the community and for everybody. It was great.
Motion to adjourn.
I got it before you.
I'm sorry.
Uh, this afternoon, as I was leaving the office, uh, I had one of our, our person over security to, uh, commend our team for the relationship that they have with the school system. And, uh, he was just talking about how, uh, the relationship with you is outstanding. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, guys, for coming out. Appreciate what y'all do. And I just recall you did not.